Good afternoon. It is 5:01 and we will call this Galton Municipal Planning Commission Work Session Meeting to order. Just refresh my memory, we can go straight into it, correct? Okay. Who is starting? Oh yeah, public, okay. First item on the agenda is Public Comment on Agenda-Related Items. We'll open up the floor to anyone from the public that wants to speak. Yes?
Hey, Rosemary Bay, Galton Economic Development Agency, 132 West Main Street, right across the hall.
Thank you.
Tonight, I am here to encourage you to approve Project Lasso. We have been working with them for months, and I haven't read all your comments, I was out last week, but I just want you to know that from my experience with them, they're a very reputable company, I think we would love to have them in Galton. In every step of the way, if there has been a challenge or a situation where the city said, "Well, we're going to have to do it this way," at least from my perspective, they've always agreed to do what they're asked to do, so. And then, the Atlas Townhomes, the gas station convenience store, just want to remind you that when that first came through for a rezoning, and they wanted it to all be residential, they agreed to keep a corner as commercial at our request, our office's request. So, I haven't, again, looked at this site plan either, but just wanted to remind you that they did work with us to keep some commercial. If this is allowed and it meets your expectations, then I hope you'll be agreeable to that, too. If it, again, meets your expectations and they address all the comments, so. And there's other worthy projects on here as well, those are just the two that I have been most involved in, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rosemary. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close, public comment. Next, we have item number two. Jim?
Sure. Jim Carpenter, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant request approval of an amended PMDP and revised FMDP for Savannah Marketplace Phase Two, consisting of currently four lots on 8.94 acres and PGC Plan General Commercial, located south of Nashville Pike and east of Gordon's Crossing. So, they are, if you remember, let's see, looking to amend this, so they amended this plan in 2023 to add these two buildings kind of in the middle of the property, and they're looking to reduce overall square footage by about 8,000, but add two additional buildings in the parking lot, add some drive-through, and increase the square footage of restaurant use on the property. The applicant also requests approval of an alternate parking plan that would provide 25 less spaces than what code would require. Code would require 320, this plan shows 295. Staff has some concerns about the site design in terms of internal, there's a lot of drives, a lot of potential conflict points with parking and drive aisles, and with the alternate parking plan. Staff has requested the applicant provide a shared parking study showing that they have adequate parking to meet the uses and the demands of the site, with the understanding that this may impact the ability for future users of the property. The architecture is consistent with the previously approved elevations. The only real kind of major change is that this middle building is going from three stories to two stories. But other than that, it's very consistent. We've asked for a little bit of architectural change to the top of the buildings and to make sure that HVAC units are screened from Nashville Pike and Gordon's Crossing. Staff has also included a list of conditions from the previously approved FMDP that were never met in regards to landscaping and stormwater for the site.
Okay. Is there a member from the applicant present? Doing well, how are you?
Doing well. My name is Ken Knuckles, I'm with Development Management Group, and I'm here representing the property owner and developer who are here tonight, if anybody has any questions directly for those folks. And I also have Mark Anno, who's out of our office, he's our engineer on this. So, we finally managed to download staff's comments today, there was some problem with the portal. Anyway, we got it loaded, downloaded, and we've kind of gone through a lot of that today. Most of the comments are agreeable. There were a few items that we felt it was worth pulling off and having further discussion with staff about, just so that we understand what's being asked. So, our expectation is that over the course of this week, we will make certain changes we can to the plans to resubmit by the 14th, but we'll also try and work through some of these other things, some of these other items as part of that.
Are there any of those comments that you want to go over this evening?
Well, yeah, and since the comments were issued, we've actually got a couple of clarifications already, but originally, an area that we met with this out before the meeting, but there was a discussion about the need for a traffic signal at Nashville Pike and Gordon's Crossing. But that actually is going to pertain specifically to the overall master developer from Savannah Marketplace, it's not something that will be included as part of anything that we're proposing to do here. So, that was one of the things we were going to talk about, I think we could probably scratch that one off at this point. Wanted to talk about some stormwater stuff with them as well, to clarify what was previously approved, what we're proposing, and some of the differences that they had asked about. We want to clarify that, so that we can revise our plan where we can or need to, as well as our stormwater calculations, which are the biggest thing that I think Ryan's looking for. So, anyway, what I'm showing from previous master plan to what we're showing now, we had five buildings that were on the previous MDP, we're showing six buildings with this revised plan. I'm showing that we're increasing the square footage by 1,973, really the only difference. A lot of that is just because we have a big three-story building there that was taking up a lot of additional square footage and stuff, so we were able to offset that, it's minimal, minimal increase. We have decreased the amount of retail and decreased the amount of office, and we've gone up in restaurant space, that comprises our 78, 875. Parking, the previous plan was required 305, they had 314 on that. We're required to have 320, and we've got 295, so we're short 25 spaces. So, we'll be working on this alternate parking plan and the narrative stuff that Jim has asked for, to show how that is going to be shared with, you know, other users in the development, so we think we can justify that. The previously proposed purveyce area was 3.7 acres, about 42 percent. This plan represents 3.1 acres, or 35 percent of green area. So, yeah, our understanding is that, you know, I guess at one point, we thought that the previous preliminary or final master development plan had already been approved, or that 615 designed and done, until recently, I guess, you guys discovered that they never resubmitted in response to the action form, so that was never actually approved, correct? So, there's not a-
Well, it was approved with conditions, but those conditions have not been met, so we added many of those conditions, that they would be reflected with this plan.
Yeah, it will be reflected on our plan, but, so anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I guess my questions all centered around mainly parking. I know with the close-by development with the restaurants, with Edley's and Rockin' Dough and MLROs, with the amount of restaurant that's over there, it seems like we continue to have an increasing problem with parking over there, which is why they had to add in the gravel parking lot behind the buildings. I know you said y'all are going to go through the study of showing what the development could look like with a shared parking plan, do you expect to have that back by resubmitment?
Yeah, that's on our list, we know we've got to get that back to you guys before we can go before Planning Commission.
Okay. Because, I mean, with the problems that are occurring over there, it would seem that increasing the amount of restaurant space and decreasing the amount of parking spaces wouldn't be a good fit, but, I mean, I'm excited about the additional restaurant space, for sure, and the additional opportunities. I just want to make sure that there's sufficient parking for all the tenants, because, I mean, they're going to appreciate the parking spaces as well.
Well, and let me just share this. So, and we were actually involved in the MLROs build-out in that center over there, so we were kind of involved in a lot of the permitting and stuff that went through, and the alternate plan that, I guess Reagan Smith had to do for that. But the big distinction here, obviously, between what they're dealing with and what we're proposing, is all of their restaurants are large spaces with no drive-through, it's all inside seating, and the three restaurants that we're proposing here are all drive-through. So, 65 to 75 percent of their customers are going to come through the drive-through. So, that will cut back on some of that concern, I would think.
Yeah.
But that'll be factored into the parking study that we present.
Okay.
I just, I don't have any questions, I just agree with CJ in regards to parking's become extremely important in these developments, so, working with staff here to go through that.
So, the three buildings that are out front, I know they're called out as mixed-use, that would be a combo of restaurant and retail.
On the north side?
Yes.
The first one is a mix of, yeah, it's got restaurant and retail. Middle building's got, it's a two-story, it's got retail and office, no, I'm sorry, restaurant and retail, and office. So, there's a mixed use in that middle building, and then the third one is restaurant and retail.
Okay.
So, those aren't, those restaurant buildings are not exclusively restaurant, there are other uses inside of that.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'd be curious what engineering's perspective is on the signal, because I know we get a lot of inquiries about that.
Sorry, can you ask that again?
About the signal, traffic signal.
Okay.
Yeah, in our opinion, it's warranted now.
I would think it would have to be at this point.
Yeah, T.DOT did a warrant analysis in '24, it looks like the analysis was done in '24, but the counts were done in '23, and it was pretty close then, so, with the things that have occurred since-
Definitely push that, yeah.
And we do have approved signal plans for that.
Dave, you have any questions? Any other questions?
I think engineering will have to answer your stormwater.
Yeah. Yeah, it sounds like you're working with staff to address the other concerns. I guess that's all for now, I guess we'll see you back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
I guess item number three pertains to them as well. Jim?
Yeah. So, the owner and applicant request approval of a final plat for Savannah Marketplace Phase Two, to resubdivide the four lots into six, to kind of provide for their revised FMDP. Staff had mostly minor comments on the plat. Just from my standpoint, want to ensure that with these property lines that are in kind of the middle of this drive aisle, that maintenance of that is going, it's a note on the plat that it's part of the Business Owners Association, but with this being private, we want to ensure that that remains in well-maintained and good order.
Okay. Chris?
Chris Mayberry with Reagan Smith. Yeah, like he said, most of the comments were pretty minor, we can come up with a note addressing who's responsible for development, we can work with Ken and his group in coming up with all that, and I guess some of the comments, we're just waiting on whatever gets worked out as far as stormwater goes, any additional open space needed or anything like that, but for the most part, it was, they were pretty minor.
Okay. This seems very straightforward to me. Anyone else have any questions?
No, it seems straightforward.
Yes?
And of course, developers here, the owner, but I'm certain that, well, first of all, they're going to be the owner of all of this, they're not selling off these parcels, is that correct? Yeah, so they're going to be the owner of all of this, so from a maintenance standpoint, it's on them. If at any point, they do decide to sell off a parcel or something like that, there'll be some sort of a reciprocal lease agreement in place, that we talk about maintenance or can charges.
Yeah.
Will that kind of work? So, yeah, the comments for this were very minor. We're hopeful that we can get Planning Commission approval on this. Are we able to get that recorded soon after Planning Commission approves that, or is it hinged off of the master plan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming what'll happen with an approval is you would have conditions of approval, as long as you address those conditions of approval and you get sign-off from all of staff members, then you can move towards receiving signatures on the plat and have it recorded.
Right.
I don't, I wouldn't think that that would be contingent on-
Good.
Now, if there was a major change in the master plan that affected a lot line, then you would have to go back and amend it, but as long as there was no major changes, I don't see why that would be an issue.
Yeah, I know that part of their concern or their urgency is, has to do with their lender and where they need to be next step with them, is they got to have a recorded plat.
Okay.
So, just want to make sure we have that. I know it's a separate matter, separated from the master plan, just want to make sure that we have the ability to do what we needed to.
Okay.
Great.
Awesome. See you back in a couple of weeks. All right, item number four, Project Lasso.
Good evening, Timberly Staff Planner. Yes, the owner applicant is requesting a site plan approval for our Project Lasso-Roy is located at Rappa Hakanak Wire Road, north of Steam Plant Road, sorry if I've botched that name, I'm still trying to figure it out. It's zoned IG, which is industrial general district, and they approximately have 13.82 acres. They're carving out about an acre of it right there on the back end where the railroad is. And this is the existing lot, it's a vacant lot, and what they're proposing is 96,007 square foot warehouse building. 91,134 is going to be the warehouse, and then 4,873 is going to be an office. They also have an additional three-sided shed, which is 8,750 square feet. So, we're just waiting on some details on the privacy fence, they do need to have a privacy fence around the perimeter, so waiting on that information. And then also, the office is the only thing that's required for the brick and stone, so they have provided that, but they're going to give us a little bit more details. Other than that, everything meets the regulations.
Okay.
That's all that.
Thank you. Is there a member from the applicant present?
Yeah, I mean, all the staff comments are reasonable, we'll get those addressed, turned back in next week. I mean, basically, it's warehouse, office, the lay-down area in the rear. We'll get the fence, the privacy fence, we'll get that addressed, make sure that that's up to the standards. Other than that, just here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Good. I just had a curiosity, what's happening to the parcel that the railroad's staying on?
The current owners, right now, they want to hold on to the railroad track portion.
Okay. Cool. That was my only question. That's all we have. See you back in a couple of weeks.
Yo.
Thank you. Item five, Southwater Manor Edition.
Yes, the owner applicant is requesting a site plan approval for the Southwater Manor Edition. It's located in the corner of Factory Street and Southwater Avenue, it's approximately 2.1 acres and it's zoned commercial services. This is the existing lot, and what they're proposing is two, 2,556 square foot buildings. They're two-story stacked shipping containers, there will be ample parking, they've added extra parking up here at the front on Southwater, and then at the back, they do have ample, they have about 50 parking spaces where they only needed 28. They have their detention pond, so they're set for that. Let's see. The parking, so the parking lot will be lit, so they have the photometric plant and the concept plant. So, the concept plant is this, this is their shipping containers, they will need to have an alternative elevation, and this is their floor plan, and this is their elevations. That's all that. They do expect, based on the pre-app, about 22 units, that's what they're going to be leasing out.
All right. Is there a member from the applicant present?
Good evening, Allison Turner with Green Lid Design, happy to answer any questions you have. Owner couldn't be here this evening, but they'll be here at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Remind me, you said there were 2,500 square foot buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
There are 2,256 square foot, but two of them.
Okay, so they're going to be, from, it's my understanding, based on reviewing the plan, basically condoed out and be separate retail spaces or offices or whatnot?
Little small retail spaces for small business owners.
Okay.
Probably more in the craft range or small restaurant kind of things, like, I don't know exactly, but they're thinking some sort of small restaurant type thing, either bakery or popsicles or something along those lines.
Okay.
That fits in a small space.
And they are anticipating about 22 units.
Okay. I think it's a cool idea. I don't have any crazy questions or comments at this time.
Did you have any concerns with the elevation? Did you say there's elevation challenges early?
So, I think what, I think to provide some more context there, they would be requesting an alternative elevate, like, alternative architecture approval from us.
Good, I misunderstood, thanks.
Due to the shipping container. What's the, just out of curiosity, because the architecture requirement would be 70% brick or stone?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Cool. Any other questions from the group? Mayor? No? Okay. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Item number six, 1520 Hunt Club.
Good evening, Brad Hickman, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant request approval of an amended preliminary master development plan or revised final master development plan for 1520 Hunt Club to add a residential mixed-use flex office development on one acre zoned MU, located south of Nashville Pike and west of Hunt Club Boulevard. You can see the location here. We have the 14 units. Most of our concerns revolve around parking. The residential parking requirement is met by a two-car garage for each unit, and then we have 10, I guess you'd say, guests or client parking spaces. And we also have concerns about what uses may be going in under MU. Of course, some uses are more heavily parked than others there. The landscaping plan for an FMD level, FMDP level document, we would like to see a lot more detail here. These are the elevations we were provided, we also like to see some more detail there as far as all sides and materials and dimensions. Just a little history on Hunt Club, it was originally approved as a PMDP, all offices complexes, and the most recent FMDP for this property was an office complex, and then the most, I'm sorry, the most recent one approved was just north of this property, it's a multi-tenant commercial building.
Okay. Thanks, Brad. Is there a member from the applicant present?
Good evening, Josh King with Prosper Engineering, representing the applicant on this project. We echo Brad's comments on working through the MU zoning and finding the right balance of potential uses. We don't want to artificially restrict ourselves that every person who might be coming into thinking about opening a small office has to come before this board, but we also don't want to leave it so open that the overall project itself becomes more of a commercial, more commercial than residential. Our intent is mostly a residential with a live-work component, so that it helps blend and transition from the more office spaces around it, but introduces a small element of residential on this one-acre piece. We do want to talk a little bit about the landscape plan. We are constrained a little bit with some existing right-of-way and utility easements, especially along Hunt Club Boulevard, so, working with our landscape architect, we're hoping to be able to take the same amount of trees that would be required and distribute them around the site in places where they would thrive, versus putting them in a narrow, confined, right-of-way space that they would not do well and would cause potential utility conflicts in the near future for the owners. We also are working through some stormwater issues with the engineering department, and also a potential connection on the plan south to the overall larger commercial development that's being developed on that piece, and we're continuing to work through how that would look, how that would function, and ensuring that it makes it onto the plans. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess, out of curiosity, are you planning to meet the stormwater requirements just through pavers?
That is the, that is the option we're looking at at the moment. We do not have the full criteria or the infiltration testing to show that it works.
Okay. What are, did you have any concerns about meeting engineering's comment related to the cross-connectivity to the south? I guess this would be-
There's the beginning of a small retaining wall between this parcel and the property next to it, we would have to take a look at that wall to make sure that it can fit, that we can move that wall so that that connection can be made a little bit more cleaner than what's currently shown on the plan, but that's something that we'll be working through with engineering, and I'm not the engineer, so that the engineer will be working on as well.
If no one has questions, I'm going to keep going.
Yeah, go for it.
So, I guess plan left, are those backs or fronts?
Those would be fronts, all of the units would be alley-loaded garages, so they would front onto the strip of open space and also whatever develops on the other side.
Okay, so, if those are fronts, the end units that are up along Hunt Club, would they be, I guess, in the elevations that y'all provided? Would it be the ones that have the wraparound porches that look like there's fronts on both the front and the side?
Yes, we would have all the, all of the end units that face public right-of-way would have a more enhanced standard than the interior-facing units to the plan south.
Okay. My, I guess, initial concern, if those are fronts, right now, we're not showing any sidewalks to the fronts of those units that are on the plan left. So I would just want to make sure that those have connectivity to the overall sidewalk network that's along public right-of-way.
That is a good point.
And then, it, is there anywhere on the plan, because I think you said that this was in an effort to have a live-work component, but is there anywhere on the plan that's designating space towards the actual work space? Because, because right now, just from the look and feel of this, this looks like we're just putting 14 townhome units here, and it's going to end up being just 14 townhome units with no workspace.
We're still working with the architect on the individual floor plans to figure out where on that first floor the workspace would be. We're also working with the planning department on both the type of use, but also limiting the square footage, so that it doesn't, the primary use within the building still is residential, that the work component is the minor aspect of it. So that could be limiting the square footage. We're open to all options and continuing to work with planning on, on that particular aspect.
All right.
As for the parking and the location, that is a good point. We don't have, just within the confines of the space, an easy way to have a clear connection between that individual user or that space and a parking space. It's just a limitation of the site, but it's something that we can go back and look at.
But, but the, I guess, to bring back what, what you just, the intent is for this to be primarily residential use?
Primarily residential with the, so, big on the live, small on the work component.
Okay.
So, big L, small W.
Okay. And I guess, question for staff. Would this, I guess, Brad, would this be an amendment to the PMDP or just an FMDP?
We didn't have an existing FMDP before this, so, for this parcel.
I think what I'm getting at is.
This would be an amendment to the PMDP.
Okay. So there would, okay, so there would be a major or minor, okay.
We're, we're fully expecting this to be a major amendment to go back before city council, just because the use, the nature of the use is changing from a strictly commercial to a mostly residential.
Okay. Understood.
On the other side of that, is that the, I have a hard time orienting myself. Is it the Steinridge Apartments or?
Well, to the west, you have apartments, but on the, so if you look at your, your screen, to the south is, is all office.
I know that, yeah. But.
And then out, out front, on the remaining eight acres, we recently approved.
Yeah, I would like to see that juxtaposed with that.
Yeah. Like an overall plan?
Yeah, just to kind of see.
Because I know, I know in the, yeah, I know in the plan up front, there's, I think, plus or minus 25,000 square feet of retail restaurant that's, that faces, all faces Nashville Pike.
Right.
And then there's some leftover space behind it, like, green space between the drive aisle and this parcel.
Yeah, the, the previous plan showed some stormwater in this area, and also an access road coming down to meet up here.
Yeah. Okay.
Perpendicular to this parcel, is that a separate parcel than the one that's going to have the retail on it?
When you say, when you say perpendicular, you mean?
Uh.
To the north?
To the west.
To the west.
Well, it's, it's all.
It's all one part, it's all one parcel.
Say it's to the west.
Yeah, so, all the other green space you see outside of the yellow line is all one parcel.
Okay.
And so, whenever that parcel came through, they have 25,000 square feet shoved up against Nashville Pike, and then there's leftover space, like, they're utilizing it as their stormwater. And then they're also tying a connector road back into, it says Nashville Pike on there. That's not Nashville Pike.
Pike Old Nashville.
That's, that's an error on the map. It's, it's just an unnamed drive.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Just like the, the previous retail that you were talking about, we asked them to, to pay in towards the signal. We're also asking for this development to pay towards the signal as well.
And that would, that would be based off trip generation?
No, that's based off of acreage.
Okay.
So this, the, what we figured was $10,425.98.
Okay.
But if you want to change it to trip generation, my client would be happy with that.
I'm sure he would. Okay. I mean, I, I think you got feedback from most everyone. If there's no other questions, I guess we'll see you back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, 206 and 210 Ross Avenue. Charlie?
Good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Peery, Staff Planner. The owner and applicant request approval of a final master development plan to construct two single-family detached residences in a HPR on 0.48 acres zoned as R6, high-density residential, located at 206 and 210 Ross Avenue. And I'd clarify that up here a little bit. So each lot is going to have two detached single-family residences, one on this lot and then one on the neighboring lot. If some of you can recall, there was a similar FMDP for the same thing on Ross Avenue to this lot here to the west. So this is basically just a copy and paste of that times two. Staff has some minor comments, mainly about the architecture of the buildings. They'll have to have a alternative architecture, architecture plan. And then engineering had some about just shifting the sidewalk. Thanks.
Okay. Is there a member from the applicant present? Okay. Staff, is there anything else, from engineering, anything else to add?
No, we were just looking for a, a cross-section. They, they do have a roadside ditch there. There's no curb and gutter. There's no shelter. So we just want to make sure that, while yes, the five-foot grass strip is, is a minimum, but it may need to be more, depending on how the ditch section meets up with, with the sidewalk.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, they're not showing sidewalk, or they are?
They are showing sidewalk.
Okay. Well, the sidewalk would have to fit within the right-of-way, though, correct?
No, not necessarily. You, you could have a public access easement for the section that's outside of the right-of-way.
Okay. And I'm assuming this is going through the PMDP/FMDP track because of the zoning?
It's an FMDP. It doesn't need a PMDP because of how, the age of the zoning.
Okay.
But that's, it's an FMDP because of the zoning. So it'll only come here once.
Okay. Makes sense. I mean, it, like, you were saying, Charlie, this is, was done right next door. I, I don't have any questions or comments. So, I guess we'll see you back. And hopefully, the applicant shows up at the voting session. Okay. Next, item eight, Mount Calvary Baptist Church.
Yes, the owner applicant is requesting an FMDP for Mount Calvary Baptist Church. It's located in the corner of Brown Place and North Boyer Avenue. It's approximately a half an acre. It's zoned MRO, multi-residential and office. What they're proposing is a 1,244 square foot addition to the existing building, which is on the back end of the, the church. Right now, we're waiting on the parking layout. They're going to present the parking layout on it. The, the addition will match the elevation, the existing elevations, which is the vinyl siding. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a member from the applicant present?
Allison Turner with Greenwood Design. We agree with staff comments, and we'll work to get those back into them later in the week. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, this one seems pretty straightforward. I, I think staff mentioned you're losing two parking spaces to add the addition. Everything fits within the setbacks, and you're matching the character of the existing building. Pretty straightforward.
A tight squeeze, but we'll figure it out. Thanks.
Okay. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks. All right. Item nine, Atlas Townhomes Gas Station.
The owner and applicant requests approval of a final master development plan to construct a 4,000 square foot convenience store on one and a half acres zoned as MU, mixed-use, located south of Long Hollow Pike and east of Highway 109. Staff had some minor comments about the site data table for this plan, mainly calling out that the use needs to be convenience, sales and service versus general retail. This site, as it is laid out, is currently underparked by two parking spaces. So the applicant will have to add at least two additional to meet the minimum standard for convenience, sales and service. As far as landscaping goes, staff has requested that there should be additional landscaping around the perimeter of the site to give some additional screening to the gas canopy. Architecture is consistent with the 70% brick and stone requirement, and per the conditional use requirement in mixed-use zoning, that the gas canopy would be, I forget the terminology for it, but it, it meets the requirements. And one other minor comment that staff had was, and this came from a pre-app, to consider rotating the sites at the canopy is parallel to the access road. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie. A member from the applicant present?
Allison Turner with Greenwood Design. We agree with staff comments, with the exception of rotating the canopy of the gas to the other, to the side road. We looked at doing that. It becomes challenging from a stormwater standpoint, so it's, we're fine with putting additional landscaping in to kind of buffer it and shield it.
It looks like you've got room to add some more parking spaces, even if they're parallel.
Right. Yeah, I think parking won't, won't be an issue. And we're going to look at some alternatives. In order to address some engineering comments, we'll look at some alternatives on the stormwater, which will help us give a little parking area.
There's no drive-through, is there?
Uh, not that I know of at this point. I mean, anything could change from.
Well, I guess, the only question I have is, around the south side, plan south and plan east side of the building, is it just going to be pavement all the way around the building from there?
Yes. Yeah. Well, since we only have one driveway access, the maneuverability becomes crucial to get around the outside of the building.
Okay.
Because I've got, a truck's got to make it all the way around without hitting the canopy.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I did want to make mention, the traffic impact study from 2014 did state, had mentioned widening of Long Hollow Pike to the eastern property boundary to five lanes. And that's going to affect their sidewalk placement. So we need to see how that's going to be addressed.
We do have an updated version from 2015.
Traffic study?
We have a, an updated, some updated information on the traffic study, but it's from 20, is a year later than the one he's mentioning. So it changes that, because the initial one was based on this whole area being a retail hub. The next one takes into account it being more residential. And we may even try to get some sort of update for, but it still calls for putting a turn lane into this drive, which I think mostly the pavement's already there. It's just be a restriping issue. So, but we'll, we'll address any comments and work with them on the traffic impact study, because our client owns this as well as the other parcel across the street. So he'll have to do that work, whether it's for this one or for the next one. It'll, I don't know what will trigger, because there's even, there's even a potential for a light at that intersection.
For a signal at this intersection. And I think the original traffic impact study, it had two accesses to, to Long Hollow Pike, one that aligned with Walnut Crest that's obviously.
I think that's why we had an updated version to.
Okay.
All right.
There's no other questions? We'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Okay, that is the end of, not the end of the agenda, but the end of the agenda items. Item number 10, other business and 11 announcements. Brian, anything?
Just a reminder to keep reviewing your new draft of the zoning ordinance. Public review draft timeframe ends on the 19th of this month, so it's only a couple of weeks left on that. And then we'll get our comments back to the consultants and hopefully be able to start moving forward with a, an adoption draft that we can take through planning commission and city council. So, I know it's a big, long document and it might feel a little daunting. And if you do have questions, please feel free to reach out. I know we've gotten some questions already from different folks, and, you know, we're happy to sit and talk or answer any questions that we can on things, just to kind of help, help you orient yourself to it, or just clarify a few things, whatever you need. So feel free to reach out.
If we, if any of the commissioners have comments and want to submit them, do you want us to do that on, through the online, I guess, comment section?
You can submit them directly by email to us, yeah, to either myself or Julian.
Okay.
I'm submitting anonymously.
That's fine, too. Whatever.
Okay.
Pipe it up and set it on my chair. Anonymous.
Any other announcements?
That's it for me.
It looks like we're going to have a new face at these meetings.
Oh, yeah, we, we should introduce. So, our city attorney has hired a new assistant city attorney, Ben Allen, who's the one standing there. So, he'll likely be the one to sit here with us at the planning commission meetings. I'm sure Susan doesn't really want to stand, sit here every night on a, on a Monday night.
At least she would pop out of her chair whenever somebody went around the wrong direction. So be ready.
Yeah. So he'll, I'm sure he'll help keep us in line if we're ever off track.
Hopefully.
But, yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Is that it?